Hey, everybody.
Oh.
Hello.
We're streaming live? Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. Trying something a little new this time.
Oh, my God.
All right.
Wow. I would have got dressed.
Hi. Well.
All right, we're gonna go one more minute, then we'll start.
Okay.
Brandon, do we have any citizens today, or they are all board members?
Ah, I believe the one calling is Mary, so I don't believe we have any citizens at the moment.
Okay.
Yes. I appear twice.
I see that. All right, whoa, lost Tracy.
I'm just, I'm just running to the fridge, I'll be back in two seconds, I can still hear you.
All right, we'll start at six o'clock. I see no, no citizens, so do I have any other citizens delegations that want to speak? All right, so let's go to the 1920 year-to-date budget review. That you read it.
That's Rita.
Anything to highlight, Rita, or you want us to ask questions?
She's trying to share her screen?
She's trying to unmute.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm trying to share my screen as well. Doing two things at once here.
Wow.
Um, Mark, yeah, do we need someone to take minutes?
Yes. I guess so.
Okay, I'll volunteer again.
How you feel about minutes, Miguel?
Okay.
I can do it.
Oh, you wanted to do it, Katina? Okay.
Whatever, no, it's okay, it's okay, I can do it.
Thank you, Katina.
I think she is feeling good because she just got all her grades in and.
All right, then let's let Katina take it.
There's the headspace for this.
Can you guys see it yet, or no?
No.
All right, so you can see it?
I can't.
No.
I'm not sure what I'm doing wrong here.
Did you hit the little green button? Share screen?
There we go, hold on.
Okay.
We got some sixth graders that can help you if you want.
It's so true.
How about now?
There they are.
There you go.
Yeah, it takes me a couple of minutes. Uh, so any highlights? There's a few highlights, we are saving, um, we have savings in the salary lines. And mostly due to these spring stipends, we're saving, we saved like $46,000 because we did not, we did not have spring sports. And I think I made, that's the only note that I think I missed on here, certified balances decreased due to new teachers and transfers, we made some transfers in April, so that changed the balance. And non-certified balance increased due to the release of encumbrances for the finance director and substitute savings, so you're gonna notice a decrease in the salaries from last month to this.
Right.
I haven't spoken out loud. Looking at the other significant, those are really the significant things except.
How do we save a half million in certified salaries?
No, from last, from last report, the change was only $2,000.
I hear some background.
Yeah, the audio's not good.
So what was your question, Mark? I'm sorry.
I was asking about the half million we saved in salaries. I think it's in your notes.
My notes are just from last month to this month. Because we were already saving in March.
Okay.
But, Mark, were you asking, like, overall, what contributed to the, overall, what contributed to the savings year-to-date?
Yes.
That I could probably not answer because of the way they budgeted last year. I, I'm not sure the answer to that. My concern is there's.
Okay, but we're sure we're saving that money.
In the salary lines, and at the end of the year, I've always been taught to true up all the lines, but that would be a huge transfer, because that would be individual lines truing up and making sure if they match what we expended. That way you can actually do true year-to-year reporting. But I'm not sure if you want me to spend my time doing those transfers because they would have to go to the board, and that would be a long meeting. I'm just saying, I can, I just don't even know how many accounts, there could be 100 accounts.
Yeah, I get it, but if it helps us with our bookkeeping and the year-to-year analysis. Rita, is part of the issue because there's fewer people on the payroll this year than there were last year?
Yeah, I'm sure it's because we cut.
29 positions, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, definitely that savings is because we did not fill positions.
All right, do we have any other questions from board members?
It is now my great pleasure to present.
Yes, I have a question. Um, you know, just so people know, if you, if you go down to the bottom under participants, you can raise your hand, too. If you click on participants, it shows you how to raise your hand if you wanted to. But, um, I have a question on your notes, Rita, on the encumbrances for the health benefit. That's based on the budget book ended March 15.
That's always been there because the budget that's in the system is based on the budget that they created in March 15, uh, 2019.
Okay, so I couldn't see on the chart, previous chart, where we are on encumber, where we are in reality on the health benefit, can you point that out? It's hard to read on this, so.
Yeah, it is hard to read, but, um, where we are is I encumber whatever the budget, I think we're over by 38,000, and that's mainly due to pensions. It's not due to the health benefits because I'm encumbering exactly what was budgeted for the health benefits. And we'll need to talk about that later with our projections.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Good, Tracy.
Um, this half 519, is that after the grievance was cleared?
Half of the grievance we have encumbered and paid this year, only half.
Right, but that's, that's after that?
Yes, we paid out 135,000 or encumbered 135,000 of the $279,000 grievance. So that is after that, yes.
That's, that's, I'm with Mark, that's a huge number to have left over in salary.
Well, again, that's compared to where we were last year, we're not sure where we were last year.
And this is.
I understand.
This is with the budget that they created. I mean, I have done no transfers in the, in the salary budget lines, but there needs to be a lot of transfers, some are over, some are under, some, there's none of them that match.
And we have to process transfers through the board, right?
In the past, when I worked here before, at the end of the year, they would do a true-up transfer, but it's typically not hundreds of lines, it's gonna be hundreds of lines this year if I do that. And that would be soon, you know, that I would bring to you guys all of the transfers that need to be made to balance out the budget.
Oh, Tracy, are you done?
Well, just one more thing, and then I'll be quiet, but I'm wondering if doing the transfers kind of gives us accountability and makes us seem like we're aware of it and we're making the transfers instead of just letting it be a true-up at the end, it's just an observation, and you can disagree with me, I'm happy for that, but I'm just concerned that if we don't approve the transfers and say we recognize there was a problem before, or however we choose to say it, you know, Lynn and Tracy choose to wordsmith it, it makes us realize that we're accountable and we're aware of it as opposed to just sweeping it under the rug. But I'm sure there are other places that this money needs to get spent, too, and that makes us aware of where we short, where we fell short in the previous year's appropriations.
Yeah, and I know it's gonna be a pain really because of how close it is to the end of the year, but we probably do need to do it, and I don't, I think this might be the last year that there's so many transfers because we're actually using actual numbers now, we're gonna be much, have a much closer estimate of what we're spending in all the lines. Um, so you would have to probably suffer through it this year, and then we can hope next year it looks a little bit better.
I agree.
Mark?
Yes.
This is Lynn, I wanna build on what Tracy Lambert said and Tracy Youngberg just said. I absolutely, as the chair, feel like we need to insist as the board that we do the true-up and transfers, no matter what, how much of a pain in the rear end it will be. Um, because that is something that we committed to do last fall, and I'm sorry, Rita, that you're left with the residue to, to, to have to do that, but I think we really need to, to make the effort.
Can I say something? I do agree, I agree with you 100%, because, like I said, when I worked here before, it was always done at the end of the, at the end of the year, you wouldn't have that many, it would only be, oh, what did we have for a balance and what we're gonna spend, and how are we gonna, you know, how are we gonna transfer it and spend it, that's what it would be, it wouldn't be fixing budgets that were done wrong. So, um, I'm all for doing it, it will be a lot of lines, but I can do it.
Thanks, Rita.
All right, so were we done with that?
So we'll probably do that for a July meeting?
I was thinking to start it in the next meeting, but to, to at least have some ready to go for you, I can just start from the top. First salary line going down, you know?
We know most of them, we know she's gonna be doing almost every salary line, because when we went through them as a team building 2021, there were, almost none of them were correct, so I think there were three correct out of the 1,600 we evaluated, so she's gonna have a lot of work to do, but.
When you look here, you can see the negatives and the positives.
Yeah.
All the negatives.
Right. Any other questions from board members? Everybody seems to be frozen on my screen. Don't know what that is. Great. Rita, while we're looking at these, these numbers of negatives, tied in with the budget, the email we got on buses, I see we're, you're showing a 310 deficit in the bus contract? Is that after the negotiated settlement for the bus companies?
No, this is not any, this is before the negotiations.
So we can anticipate that 310 going down?
Correct.
It's another example of it not being set up appropriately.
Yeah, I think with the transportation lines, I'll have to wait until we settle before I do those transfers.
I notice my connection is not, but I'm getting very poor audio.
You are.
Are you clear?
Should, am I done sharing this, or?
Mark, I think it's your audio, because everything's clear on my end.
Okay.
Same here.
Well, then Lynn, I guess until I figure it out, Lynn, you wanna run the, run the meeting for a few minutes, like, figure out what's wrong with my audio?
Okay. Uh, I don't have the agenda in front of me, what's the next thing on the agenda, I'm sorry.
Next thing is year-to-date 1920 budget, I'm sorry, discussion of projected 1920 budget balance.
Okay.
So I'm gonna share. Green.
Great.
I just have to find it. All right, so one of the discussions we wanted to have with you was the fact that the way the budget was originally set up, remember Rita and I didn't set up the original budget in 1920. We have been contributing based on what we were, what was budgeted. Okay, everybody can still hear me?
Yeah.
Um, we have been contributing based on what, how that budget was set up, and then we got changes in Lockton's projections. So you'll notice, um, on the screen that I'm sharing with you, you'll notice, I'm gonna see if I can make it a little larger for you. I don't know if I can do that. Yeah, I get. All right, you'll notice that there's a scenario one and a scenario two, we need the board to let us know whether or not we should continue along what they anticipated needing us to put in in March of 2019, or if we should go with the Lockton's, what they changed up for us in February. Um, we, we need the call on that because that has a, a significant impact to what we end up close the year out with. And given all that's transpired with the, with the health insurance fund, we wanted the board to be involved in the decision.
Tracy, can you, can you, uh, please, we can see scenario one, but we can't see the bottom of a scenario two on this page.
I think, oh, that's right, hang on, let me look at to see if that's what it looks like on my email, give me one sec.
Because there probably should be something that says anticipated closeout.
Yeah, one second.
With the 2020 revised projections.
There is no bottom, because.
Oh, there isn't a bottom?
There isn't a bottom to scenario two because we would stop contributing, like, we've over-contributed. So there's no balance to.
Okay, so then what I was showing them is the complete document.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
All right, so let me share it again.
So what you're, so what you're saying to us is that you would like guidance from the board, and, you know, since, since we don't take action at this committee level, we would be making a recommendation to the board next week when we meet.
So we, yeah, that's essentially what I'm saying, we brought this to the board's attention back in, it was either February or March, I'd have to go back and look in the, in the meeting, the committee and the meeting minutes. Um, but we got an unexpected email from Lockton in February, I believe, that suddenly said that we did not need to contribute nearly as much as was budgeted, and it was a very unexpected email, and, and we weren't really sure what to do about it, so we didn't do anything, we just continued along that path, but now we're closing, coming to the close of the school year, so we need to know if we're finished contributing, or if we finish up with the original projections from March of 2019.
I see Mark is back on, Mark, do you want to take over?
I'm stopping audio problems, go ahead, Lynn.
Okay, you're still having audio problems, I'm sorry, that's too bad. Um, so Tracy Lambert, you looked like you were gonna ask a question, or I thought you did.
Dr. Youngberg have a suggestion? Or Rita, I'm happy to hear either suggestion, looking at the numbers and, you know, I see what they are, but what would your suggestion be from either of you, or both of you, it can be different, too, I'm, I'm happy to hear differing opinions.
And we were hashing this out today, earlier today, so go ahead, Rita, I'm gonna let you give your explanation.
So what I wanna say is, you know, I think the first scenario is, is high, 1.2 million that we have to still contribute because the claims are lower because of the COVID-19, but I do caution that come July or August next year, everybody's gonna start going to the doctors again. So we do need a reserve, it's just how much of a reserve do we need? The last Board of Finance meeting, Chris spoke about the balance, and he made a comment that there's a $300,000 favorable balance in March. That, so if you look at scenario two, there's no way we're gonna get to 1.5 surplus if he says there's only a $300,000 surplus in March, in my opinion, that's my opinion, there's no way we're gonna get to 1.5 million surplus. So I don't think Lockton's second projection is on the money, I think they took one month and a low month of January and considered that for the rest of the year. It, but it is very hard, I would suggest putting some in, some of the anticipated closeout, we have anticipated closeout of $950,000 surplus, I would suggest to put some of that into the health insurance fund.
Like, maybe split the difference?
Yeah. That's, that's my take.
Um, Tracy, did you have another, Tracy Lambert, did you have another question?
Um, not a question so much as when, you know, when we come out of this school year, there are projections that there could be more COVID things in the fall or even next winter, and that could then push our medical expenses up. And we need to kind of be prepared for, um, for those kind of later expenses, just based on the COVID, not necessarily, if people haven't been able to get into a doctor, I have to have a physical, I haven't been able to get an appointment because of the COVID, so now I'm gonna have my appointment in July, I think, is when it's scheduled. If everybody's pushing things out like that, not only waiting for the new year, but because they haven't been able to get appointments, we're gonna see a ricochet of those expenses come back, I put it all in.
Okay, go with the original projection and put it all in?
I hate to say it because I know we need the money, but I, we put it all in, so that way we don't get caught in the same place we were this time last year.
Fair enough.
Uh, Katina had her hand up next.
Yes, uh, do we still have to pay for last year? That, that balance that was not, uh, paid, the deficit?
Lynn, remember we were asking for clarification from Jim Rivers on that, we never actually got formal clarification about what additional monies we were supposed to fund?
No, we never did, and it's almost near the end of the fiscal year. Um, I think that we we don't, we, you know, we never did get clarification from that, and the town council never resolved the issue of passing a resolution uh, to create an oversight committee that would be participated in on behalf of the town and the Board of Ed, despite several requests on our part. So I think we're on our own here to figure out what we wanna do. And Katina, were you referring to the reserve issue? I think you were.
I thought she was.
I think, I think quite frankly, everybody considered it a wash.
Oh, okay, well.
I mean, because they've never, never.
Wrote it back up.
Done anything about it.
Right, and even when we asked about it, we couldn't get clarification on it, so.
Right. So, so I think, I think to Tracy Lambert's point, we're gonna have pent-up demand for healthcare, period, right, people who had elective procedures scheduled, people who had regular maintenance of care scheduled, and I think it's gonna be a bumpy road for many, many months. Um, but I don't think that we should, and I think what Rita said at the very beginning is right, that we should anticipate that although we're gonna save money right now in these last several months of the year from underutilization of healthcare, we'll probably get some spikes in the coming year.
Okay, can I just clarify what Tracy Lambert said?
Sure.
Is she saying put the $950,000 surplus in, or, or meet the obligation that we needed to meet, because that's gonna put us in a deficit?
Explain to me the difference if you don't mind, Rita.
I don't think it'll, the 1.242 in red,
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's what Lockton told us, that's the projection Lockton gave us in March of 2019, that would meet the full obligation of $10.4 million put into the fund.
Okay.
I, so that's why I'm asking, and we have 103,000 of a surplus, we put too much into the dental fund, and I know that can be transferred, we could tell the town, just transfer the 103 into the health instead of the dental.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is underneath that, that we will show a deficit of $187,000. You know, because we can't show a deficit, I say we put in the 950,000 anticipated closeout plus the 103.
Yes, yes, I agree with you, yes.
Okay.
Second scenario, yes. Thank you.
I was just clarifying, like, what you meant.
Yeah, I don't wanna put us in a deficit, but I don't want us to find out in August, September, when everybody's going back to the doctor because doctors are open and stuff like that, that we're suddenly back in a deficit again because we projected based on March's low utilization that we were gonna have a surplus.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Jaime has his hand up, and then Katina, I think, again, Jaime? You need to unmute yourself, Jaime.
Thank you, I mean, Rita, can you explain to me then a scenario two?
Rita, would you explain scenario two again?
She just did one, but what is scenario two, we're trying to choose between the two of them, right?
So scenario two was locked and came to us in February, early March of 2020, and gave us a new, a re-projection, a new projection of what the expenses will be this year, and they, with their new projection, I think it was, we only had to put 7.7 million dollars in, not 10.4. So that's why there's, we would have a surplus according to them of 1.5 million dollars in the health insurance. I don't think that's gonna happen because Chris, Chris Johnson had said there was a surplus in March of 300,000. So how are we gonna reach 1.5 million surplus by, by June, I have no idea. But I don't have any documentation from them, so, um, scenario two is their new scenario that we don't have to contribute as much, but we've already contributed. Um, do I have it, hold on, I have it here, we've already contributed, I believe, over the 7.7 million, so I, I don't think we can take it back, it's in the fund, it's already there, so scenario two is, is just there for you to, to, to look at, that Lockton's numbers had changed significantly. We just wanted to make them aware.
I'm relatively new to the whole analysis of health insurance funding, but I think it's strange that within a year's time that the estimates would, would change by millions and millions of dollars within.
I don't think so, for some who works, for somebody who works in healthcare and knows how these self-insured funds work, it's not unusual for there to be big swings, and, you know, because.
Month's time?
Yeah, because when you are self-insured, you're taking on all the risk for paying out for what people use in your plans, and you just get one person who gets in a serious car accident and needs 10 operations and rehab, or you get a premature baby. Um, or, you know, some, some, you know, that's why it's a risky business.
Got it.
Um, and I also think that despite how unlikely it seems that in March, if we were 300,000 below at the end of Ju, three months later during COVID-19, we could be there could be practically zero utilization of care among our group for that three-month period, so it's, 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 it's really hard to tell until everything is closed out. Um, but I would say that, you know, as long as we're gonna stay in the business of being self-insured, which many people on this call know I disagree with, um, that we have to be prepared for the risk and, and, and listen to what people are saying about there may be pent-up demand that we need to deal with. Um, and, 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 but I don't think it's unrealistic to think that there won't be more savings over the last three months of the year than we anticipated to. Because you just don't know.
Right.
Katina?
Oh, yes, I, I wanted to say that, um, I agree with you, Lynn, and you, Tracy, that we should be basically conservative and do those projections ahead of time. But my second comment is I'm really annoyed that we're not getting responses from the town of Wyndham. Or I think that's what I heard, that we have not been told exactly how much is in that fund and follow-up. And if that is true, yes, who, who, who do we call to complain or what, what do we do? Because we cannot be in, in the dark.
Katina, you talking about when we asked the question about feeling, paying the, the difference from last year?
Yes, that is not clear, right? And how much money, if it's paid or not, you know, has to be paid or not? So whatever, whatever Rita and you have asked from the town of Wyndham, I think we should have everything in writing and right away as a matter of respect.
So noted. Thank you, Katina. Is there, so Mark, do you want to weigh in on this? We've all been having a lot of conversation. You're the chair of this committee.
Yeah, unfortunately, for some reason, my, my audio keeps cutting it out. I think you're right, that in terms of the swings in the cost, Lynn, you're absolutely right. It only takes one or two, and with no elective stuff going on, that we will probably have savings this year. I'm concerned that we're not getting exact figures that we need from either Lockton or from, from the town. But I would like to see us be conservative, but not end the year in a deficit situation for the general budget.
So do you have a recommendation to make, Mark?
Not right this moment, I, I need to, I probably need to make a phone call to Rita to go over these numbers in more detail without the computer problem and maybe come up with a recommendation that I can email you tomorrow.
What do the rest of the board members on the call think? Paula, you haven't said anything. Mary, do you have any opinion on this?
This is Paula. I, I too are concerned about having an increase in expenses when things seem to settle down or appear to settle down. So whatever we need to do to make sure we're on, on mark with that. I think probably with, with regard to the reserve, the Board of Finance is supposed to be keeping a very close check on what the reserves look like and what the expectation is for putting into that fund. So I think if we have any questions relative to that, you know, we might want to chat with Tyler.
Mary, is there anything you want to say?
Uh, no, no, I, I think Rita's, you know, assessment was clear. And I understand that we want to be responsible to the health insurance, and I do think we should press forward with looking into getting out of the self-insurance business.
Thank you, Mary. So I'm hearing that there, I'm picking up that there's a little bit too much confusion and or unanswered questions for us to resolve this question of what we want to recommend to the board about where we land on, on, you know, how much we we want to pay. And, and I do hear that people want to be conservative and pay as much as we can without getting into a, a deficit. And I also hear some hesitation that there may be some clarification that we need from either the broker and/or the town. And I, I hear what Paula's saying about going right to the Chair of the Board of Finance if we're not getting what we need. So Mark, if it seems okay with you as the Chair of this committee, perhaps what we should do is give ourselves another few days to try to get some clarity and some more answers and for you to get on the phone with Rita when the, when the, when the auditory issues are working better. And come back to the board with a recommendation in, in either next week, or if we have to have a special meeting to, to deal with it, we can do that too, right?
Right.
Does that make sense to folks? Give a thumbs up if, if that makes sense, or Jaime, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, quick question. I might, I think I'm, yeah, how much is you putting to the budget this year for the children? How much are we looking at?
What's the total budget this year for the health insurance?
For that line, what is, what, what do we have available? Or at least the numbers, what, what, what's there?
Go ahead Rita, you want to answer that?
I believe the budget line for group insurance, now there's more than one budget line, there's health, dental and life. The health and dental, they're separate lines. The group insurance is 6 million and the dental is 350,000. Now, keep in mind that 6 million is what's in the budget, but we get credits from, you know, employees and retirees. So that's why Lockton had said we had to put in 10 million in the beginning. So it would be our 6 million plus all of the grants and the retirees and the employees contributions to total the 10 million.
We have that money.
Well, right now, the budget has 6 million, it's 1.2 million dollars in the hole because the budget was only put in for 6 million and the revenues that Chris projected were short. So it's, it's confusing because we have more than three or four revenue streams for insurance, you're self-insured.
So I see this, we're in the red.
Right, I mean, with our surplus, we'll be able to put in 950,000 of it because we have a surplus, and that's mainly because of COVID-19 and the transportation savings.
Thank you.
So do people, I, I got a lot of thumbs up on my, my suggestion that we get some more clarity on this. And if we don't feel ready to take action today, we don't, which I, it's pretty clear we aren't, and that we possibly have a recommendation to bring to the board next week at our meeting on May 26th. Or if we do not, and we need to have a special finance and audit committee meeting to hash over the information, we can do that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Because this is a big decision and we don't want to get, we don't want to get ourselves into hot water here. Okay.
Agreed.
Thank you, Rita. I, I trust that you'll work with Mark and figure out a path forward on this. And, and go to Tyler if you need more information. Okay, next item on the agenda?
Discussion of the resubmission of the 2021 budget to Board of Finance.
Okay, so this has to do with the, the revenue changes that were brought up last week. Dr. Youngberg sent out a email to all of us. I think it was like a week ago today, probably, with that information. And we've had some people on the Board of Finance ask us, well, now that you know you're going to get, what is it, $912,000 more in alliance funding, do you want to decrease your request to the Board of Finance? We've also shared with them that we will be able to apply for some money under the CARES Act as a relation, as, as a result of COVID-19. But we've been very clear that we have to apply for that money, we may not get it all. And even when we do get it, it's supposed to be reserved for specific types of uses, some of which we can't even anticipate yet. Like what will happen with buses, what will happen with the children's social and emotional needs? What will happen, you know, all sorts of costs. And also we had on the table the money, I mean, the laptops that we're getting and some money that can be repurposed for technology, like 108,000 or whatever it was. And the lap, and the 600 laptops, right?
Yeah, I can share, I can share those figures so everybody can see them, because I just
Yeah, that would be helpful, because I'm just doing it off the top of my head.
Yeah, so.
But, so the question that we wanted to ask you all tonight is the, the Board of Finance is meeting tomorrow at 7:00 PM. And I just got word from Tyler Griffin today, this afternoon or this morning, that since we have been requesting that the public comment all be posted online so that we can publicly see who's been submitting testimony and what they've been saying about this. So that, so that nobody can be saying, I've heard from lots of people and most of them want this, or most of them want that. Also, we want to know what's being said in the public comments, so if there's a chance for us to refute or, or explain something, we get a chance to do that. Tyler assured me that there would be no action taken on the Board of Ed budget tomorrow night. They'll probably take it a week from tomorrow on the 27th. So we need to let our superintendent know how we should be responding to any questions we get from them tomorrow night pressing us on this matter. So I'm going to open it up to discussion. The, the, the question on the floor is, do we want to be decreasing our request to the Board of Finance for funding? Or do we want to leave it as is? Or do we want to do something different? Anybody?
I, I, can I, I don't know if you're looking for the board members to talk, or if I can
You, you can certainly chime right in.
So I feel like I'm really trying to establish the start of a very transparent and honest relationship with the Board of Finance and with the town in general. And this, all of this money here is money we didn't anticipate having when we built the budget. So I feel like it makes sense for us to, to have that discussion with them that we learned just the other day by chance that we're getting almost a million dollars in additional alliance funds. And they changed a grant around for us and allowed us to purchase technology. And that's a little over a million dollars or 2.1% of our current budget. So I feel like in trying to develop, you know, long-range goal of having that kind of back and forth relationship and support of kids, it makes sense to have that conversation and say to them, there is money that we didn't know was available before. And, you know, obviously, I'm going to go with what the board makes the decision, I, you know, I work for you. But I, I feel like it's hard to not offer up this money and then expect them to say that, you know, expect them to fund that or come close to funding what we requested. It makes it more difficult to have that we're working together kind of attitude.
Well, I see you didn't put the CARES money in here, so this is really the alliance funding and the technology funding.
Right, and I don't want to, I don't want anyone to assume we can use, use the CARES money to pay for gaps in our staffing structure, which is essentially what the budget request is covering. The majority of it is covering gaps in the staffing structure, right? We're not able to pay as many people as we have on our payroll. Because honestly and truly, the task force that's working at the state level is supposed to be providing to us some estimates of costs around things like having to transport 10 to 12, 10 to 15 kids at a time instead of 50. They're doing some basic estimations and they're supposed to be sending it to us so that superintendents can have an idea of what it's going to cost us to start off school in the fall under these bizarre circumstances. So I feel like that money is going to be spent on something related to a COVID-19 response. So I don't think we can offer that up. Otherwise, we'll be going to the town and asking, asking them to bail us out.
So Mary Galucci let me know that she has a comment. So Mary, I'm going to call on you, and then anybody else raise your hands. I can't see Mary, but I can see you guys. Mark, and then after Mary. Mary?
Yeah, I, I just want to say, you know, I agree that if we got, have this additional grant funding, you know, it's great that we have a conversation with the Board of Finance. You know, I just worry they're going to cut more, you know, that, because that's a problem of what we ask for, we historically have not gotten. And of course, I think that the CARES money can't even be considered because that is, you know, a special sort of earmark. So at least, you know, the way I envision that. So, I mean, I, I think we could very carefully say that our request might be flexible, but only so in, to a certain extent, you know, 2.1% it looks like perhaps. Because we can't have any more staff removed or laid off. And, and that was what some people were saying about the budgets. You know, they don't want to see people get laid off. I guess they weren't thinking of school employees when they said this, but yeah, so I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, I, I certainly agree that the CARES money shouldn't even be talked about because we don't know what it's going to be, we don't know what it's going to be used for, so that stays off the table. Clearly Tyler's going to know, if not the full Board of Finance, that we've got this extra million dollars. I think we need to offer, at least let them be aware of it. We can do it one of two ways, we can say that we can reduce our request by a certain percentage, or we can tell them that this $1 million will make up tax money that they don't have to, to raise the citizens with tax. The benefit of saying that we can reduce the budget to them is that it doesn't fold into the NBR where they're all scared to death that if they give us an extra dollar today, they got to give it back to us again tomorrow. So that's a double-edged sword. If we take out the 1 million, then, then that's NBR money they don't have to worry about. But on the other hand, if we don't get this additional money next year, an alliance grant money, that's money we're going to have to ask for again next year. So I would think we need to make them aware and make them, and as a board, we have to decide how much, they're going to cut us. It's whether we give them this billion dollar cut off the top or not, they're, they're, they're going to cut us. We're not going to get, I don't think, anywhere near the, the money we're asking for. But I think it only makes good sense from a transparency standpoint and from a, if you will, a public relations standpoint, to make them aware we have this extra money.
People can see in the chat that Katina weighed in on her opinion on this, if you, if you go to the chat function. I just acknowledged that I heard what she said, where she basically agreed with what Dr. Youngberg said and Mary said, and she was doing it while Mark was talking and essentially that's where Katina is. Katina, do you want anything, add anything to that?
No, I'm sorry, it's, it's a very delicate balance, like everybody is stating. And I, I know we will be cut, and I don't want them to cut us. But we have this money and it should be transparent that we say, okay, this is kind of our maximum that we think we're able to cut our budget for. And then hold the line.
Okay. Tracy or Jaime or Paula, anybody else want to weigh in?
This is Paula. I tend to agree. Hi. I agree. I think we have to, again, be upfront about this money. I thoroughly agree that the CARES cannot even be mentioned. We need to make sure that money remains intact. But I do think that it is a, a good, I think it's a good thing, transparency-wise, good faith, just to to be, you know, let them be aware of this. Yes, I, I agree with Mark, we are going to get cut. And I think if we can establish a good working relationship, then hopefully they'll be kind.
Okay, thank you Paula. Jaime and then Tracy had her hand up first, then Jaime.
Oh, it's okay, Jaime can go, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jaime then.
Yeah, I think transparency is just the only way we have. Well, otherwise, where would we hide them? So we have to let them know we have them and they just hope for the best, you know. But what I hear, they're going to do a deep cut to whatever we proposed. Somebody close to, you know, seems to know what they're doing. So I think it's, I agree with all the previous opinions.
Okay, uh, thank you, Jaime. Tracy and then Mark has something in the chat box since he's having audio problems if people want to see it.
I think that, that we reduce by, by what we're getting different, but that we either ask them to be aware or make them aware of what additional technology and connectivity expenses we may have come the fall. And either they make plans to be able to use their rainy day fund or something else if we come up against a severe technology deficit or, you know, some other kind of outreach deficit that we kind of have a tactic agreement that, that they help us out if we come into that. Because if we cut our budget and, you know, adjust it as necessary as they're requesting, nothing's going to say that in the fall, these kids go back to school or that distance learning isn't applied half the time. We have kids going week one, week two, and those kids still need to be engaged on those off weeks or something like that. I'm just throwing things out there. And so we're still going to need to be able to have technology for the students that are in the building as well as the students who are at home. So make them aware that while we're cutting by this amount here and we're happy to meet them halfway, there may come up in our future, in our not too distant future, an actual need to be able to meet our students' needs and see if we can get some kind of agreement or capital improvement addition as necessary if everybody goes back to school and everything goes back to normal in the fall and there's not a revisiting of COVID or something like that, that we have that ability to, to tap into some extra funds to be able to supply for our students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm, I want to bring, make, make sure everybody see what Mark wrote. He said that he thinks we should make the Board of Finance aware that we are reducing our request by this amount, but not, not the spending as we still need to meet the needs of the students. What do people think of that, thumbs up, thumbs down? I see thumbs up, thumbs up.
I think we.
Go ahead, Jaime.
We have discussed this previously, you know, that we reduced the 2.1 from the nine point thirty-four, nine point fifty-five that we have the budget there or if I requested, then that would come to a seven point something. You know, that's, we should stand there. We're going to get it, I don't think so, but we should stand by, by those. They would, that would cover our needs, you know, most as, as stated previously. So in essence, it's what Mark is saying, but what I think we have mentioned this before, that proportion, seven points up, take the 2.1 of the.
Well, I, what I, what I, what I'm, I, I, we, I think we agree, Jaime, I, I, what I'm hearing is we go to the Board of Finance and we say, given these two dollar amounts, the nine hundred and twelve thousand and the hundred and eight thousand, which adds up to one million twenty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-two or a 2.1% increase. But the question I'm asking is, are we doing what Mark says, which we're not going to reduce our spending? As far as we're concerned, we still have a budget with a 9.72% request or whatever, Mark? Is that what you're saying? And we're just asking for less revenue from the town taxpayers.
Correct, that's, it's a matter of semantics. We're not reducing what we're spending, but we're going to reduce how much tax dollars we're using to spend that money. I think it's a matter of semantics, but it's important for us to maintain the credibility that we still need to spend 9.7% increase. But because of this extra money, as you say, we're able to, we're able to use this grant money to, so we don't have to take so much tax dollars. It's, it's, I guess it's important to maintain that, the, the logic of what we need to spend. That's, it's a better semantics, if you will.
Thumbs up or thumbs down on that, folks?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in.
Yeah, okay, and Mary said she agrees. Okay, so Tracy Youngberg, you have this from the board members that are on the call today, unanimous support to, to say that we are reducing the request by that dollar amount, but we are sticking to our budget. Um, we, because that's what we need to meet the needs of the students and the staff and faculty in this town. And that any discussion, which I think we, we've held the line so far in the budget, I mean, the conversations with the Board of Finance, any discussion of how we make do with whatever we get, we're not going to enter into that with them now. That's for the board to deal when and if there's a budget passed. Sound okay?
Sounds good to me, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Tracy Youngberg, do you agree with that?
I do, it's, it's essentially.
You're the one that's going to have this conversation. So is it something you can honestly get behind and, and agree with?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm all for the fact that the 9.7 and change budget would have meant that we would have everything we'd need to keep the staffing structure and not, you know, have everything we were looking to fund. Um, and yes, so that asking for 2.1% less still says that we need that full amount, but we're asking the taxpayers to contribute, yes, it makes perfect sense, I do agree with it.
All right.
Thanks for asking, Tracy Lambert, good question.
Position too, like I said, it, it puts me in the position of delivering the message, I'm trying to be transparent, we got this extra money. So I think it works for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
And speaking of working for everybody, we didn't have the discussion and I don't see it on my agenda about the transportation.
Oh.
Yes.
Is it not on the agenda? I'm, I'm sorry, I, I didn't think I'd be chairing the meeting, so I didn't think it out.
No, it wasn't specifically on the agenda, I thought we would do it under the discussion of the 1920 budget balance.
Okay.
Okay.
It's just an extension of that because it's, it's, it's going to affect the balance of the night, of our current year budget. That's where I thought we would squeeze it in. That's what I, that's what I, and, and, and left the meeting for my, my problem, but.
And actually, in a sense, it was, it was brought up in the, in the, in the, under that point because it's in Rita's projections as a surplus. She's anticipating that we're going to pay it, settle it where it was. I will bring you all up to speed, I had another conversation with John Hipsher today from M&amp;J. Um, I actually was able to use all the information that the board members were commenting. Um, I basically had a conversation with him and explained to him all the concerns that the Board of Ed members had about trying to settle this contract and about the increase in our transportation contract and the fact that there was only one bid in the process. And I went through basically everything. Um, so if nothing else, he and I have a much better relationship than we've had in the past because we spend, have spent a lot of time going back and forth between emails and phone calls. And one of the things that he said at the end of the phone conversation was that we don't know what's going to happen with transportation moving forward, but that he, he's assuring me that he's going to work with me and, you know, not put the school system out of business if we end up having to do these 10 to 15 kids on a bus. And I said, well, I'm going to hold you to that, John, because we really, you know, you need to give us a little leeway here because you can hear all the concerns that everybody has about settling this contract. And he said, he said to me, you have my word, we're going to work with you. So I, you know, I don't know him well enough, I hope his word means that I had, you know, that he's telling me the truth. But I, I felt a little better about the convers, about the relationship after the conversation. So I appreciate the comments all of you sent because I had a whole list of things to discuss with him. So it was, uh, it was good back and forth.
Okay.
Jaime?
Uh, I guess my question, I sent an email earlier to Dr. Youngberg. And my question is, has he complied with all the requests, the requirements that the executive order asked for? Because the last email, as I saw, as I saw it, he was mentioning that he didn't want to provide all that information because we're a private company and, and all of these issues.
So I think he probably touched the surface on the things they were expecting to be provided. And I talked to a bunch of other local superintendents that have M&amp;J and he provided us basically with the same information he provided them. I, I don't know, you know, it's, it's someone's interpretation of the way the executive order is written. So maybe other bus companies gave a little more detail. He did tell us the average salary of the drivers, he told us how many hours they work, how many buses, we knew how many buses. So I mean, I, like I said, I think he gave, generally covered what they were looking for, but he probably could have gone a little more in depth, but he didn't treat Wyndham any different than the other districts.
So would you recommend that we pay what he's asking for?
I think I would.
You have dealt with this.
Yeah, because I think for us to go beyond this point is going to require attorneys to be involved. And I think that's going to cost us more money than settling it right now.
I don't think it's going to cost more money because we're paying under here, maybe the equivalent to one or two positions. So I just want to make sure that we do the right thing. The, the information that he said, he said that, you know, he was paying an average of five hours per driver. But I was under the understanding that he had laid off some, some drivers. So we don't have a lot of information, we don't know. I mean, we're taking him, on his word, so.
That's, we are.
Though, though I will say that, that Dr. Youngberg has been comparing notes with the other superintendents.
Yeah, that's the first thing I did. I called Kelly Lyman in Mansfield, figured she's right next door, figure out, and she got exactly the same information that Wyndham has. And actually, her, her settlement, even though we're not supposed to have a formal discussion about how you're settling with, because we all have private contracts, her settlement is almost exactly the same as our, you know, her proposed settlement is almost exactly the same as ours. And the same is true, although the other districts I checked in were a little smaller. Um, the same is true with the other ones that have M&amp;J. It did take him much longer to come back around and having the discussion with me, but we ended up in the same place that the other districts are, ended up.
Mark Doyle has written that, oh, sorry, Jaime, are you finished?
No, that's okay, I'm, I'm done. I just wanted to.
Mark Doyle has written that I think we need to move forward and pay the agreed amount from our negotiations. We have spent a lot of staff time and money plus lawyers. Mary writes, I agree, Mark, we need to keep communications open with M&amp;J going forward. And Katina writes, I agree with Mark, though we voted on this already. I remember Tracy Lambert made the motion, the company provided the information as per Dr. Youngberg. So what I think Dr. Youngberg wants tonight is confirmation that we're going to move forward with this and, and just settle this and not ask for more information. I haven't heard from Tracy Lambert yet. Tracy, would you like to say anything about this?
As long as there's an assurance that he's going to put his staff back on the payroll, because that was my big concern when I first heard that he was asking for us for money to pay his staff, them off. And I don't know if it was a misconception or a lack of understanding or if it was just outright falsehood, and I hate to accuse him of that. But, um, but if he's going to hire staff back and pay them accordingly, at least through the end of this school year, then I have no problem with it. If that's not going to happen, then I have a significant problem with it because he's not paying for buses and he's not paying for fuel and he's not paying for anything else. He's just profiting off of us then.
That is his plan, is to hire the drivers back, that's what he's telling me is his plan.
Okay, so are we affirming the previous vote that was taken to move forward and settle this? Mary says yes, everybody else? I see a lot of nodding heads. Uh, Jaime's still abstaining, you abstained last time, I think, too. So Paula, you're yes?
Yes.
Katina, Mark already weighed in, said yes. Okay, so you got, you got your go ahead.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep. I think this is one last thing for you to have to spend your time worrying about. Um, is there anything else on the agenda?
No, Lynn, that was the last thing. We have, do we have any citizens left, we give an opportunity to comment, even though it's not on the agenda first?
Any public comment Mark is asking for? Okay, so, um, Mark, you want to adjourn the meeting?
I guess we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:03. Rita, I'll be on the phone with you tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow night is the Board of Finance meeting at seven. And next Tuesday, not next Wednesday, is our next full Board of Ed meeting. It's the day after Memorial Day weekend, so I don't want people to be thrown off. But next Tuesday, we'll have a Board of Ed meeting. And then according to Tyler, the public comment for the Board of Finance will all be posted by Thursday of this week. So we'll have a chance to look through it. And if there's anything we want to say to them before they vote on our budget, which he's, unless things change tomorrow night, he's intending to do it the following Wednesday, the 27th. Okay?
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, good night, everybody.
Night.
All right.